deliberations of the budget and I have a handout for the selectmen which I don't have copies for everyone in the audience but I'll read them to them on this sheet you have a number of suggested changes in the budget and they start with accounts that are associated with heating fuel so on page forty-five for the fire department there is a reduction of two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in the heating fuel in the police department a reduction of two hundred dollars that's page fifty-one on page fifty-nine in the highway division two thousand five hundred dollar reduction in the heating fuel line item in on page sixty-nine in the town building maintenance in the heating fuel account a reduction of two hundred fifty dollars senior citizen center page ninety-five heating fuel reduction of one thousand dollars Portland library a reduction of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars that's on page ninety-nine in the animal control division page one hundred twenty-one the heating fuel is reduced by three hundred fifty dollars and the parks and recreation page one thirty-three heating fuel is reduced by two hundred fifty dollars the total of those reductions would be nine thousand fifty dollars now this would not be out of the general fund but for the water fund a reduction in heating fuel of one thousand five hundred dollars within the capital budget the police intoxicilizer we are going to purchase with dollars out of the operating funds this year so we're going to reduce the capital transfer by nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars because we've had retirements there is some savings in that department so we can buy the intoxicilizer this year within the benefits on page one hundred one general town government we're reducing medical insurance by fifteen thousand dollars that's related to a reduction in the increase for health insurance and there is an asterisk there because within the board of education we believe there would be approximately some savings of forty thousand dollars for the same reason medical insurance due to the reduction in the increase that they're being charged we have the same pretty much the same broker in parks and recreation Tom realized that within the water and sewer accounts we didn't have enough money because we anticipate there will be a substantial amount of use of the water and sewer at the we put in some irrigation at Nolan Field and then the riverfront park there are the bathrooms so we've added a little more thirty-five hundred so the net change would be in general government thirty thousand three hundred if you were to agree to the forty thousand dollar reduction in board of education that would bring your total reduction to seventy thousand three hundred and on your attached sheet you see that that changes the need for the mill rate change as it's presented to you in February it was a point four one zero point four one increase in the mill rate this would be a zero point three two so it's a reduction in the need for the mill rate to change
what do you got in quayton dollars
in terms of dollars for the budget then it would be seventy thousand three hundred
the point three two
um Tom yes correct
what's question
point three two of the mill what's that equate to in dollars
oh that okay point three times seven hundred
I could work it out
yeah
but the point oh nine is the seventy thousand right three hundred would be point oh nine difference
yes yes you want to know the total increase in the budget right
I wasn't dollars sorry
yep um let's see right now we're at six forty-one one one three so we would subtract seventy three hundred would be five seven zero eight one three is that right Tom
remember the following question
I'm just trying to figure out what the dollar amount of the increase would be so what point three two equates to in dollars
well what I'm telling you is what the increase in the budget is but you're asking what point three two is in terms of dollars
generates twenty-four point oh five million dollars
say that again
it needs with the increase it needs to generate we need to generate twenty-four oh five oh million dollars so that would be you need to increase it by the point three two to get to that
right what's point three two dollar
before it was two four one two two now it's two four oh five oh so uh that's seventy
I thought point oh nine was seventy-two
so could you phrase your question so that Tom can answer it rephrase your question
it's gotta be about two hundred fifty grand
it's about two hundred thirty-six thousand
yeah I'm trying to figure out how much new money we need what point three two equates to and I'm hearing about two fifty what's that so about two fifty just so we all understand in dollars what type of increase we're talking about here not just in percentage with point three two I guess my next question
can we just wait for the answer because if we ask too many questions you're not gonna get an answer
I didn't know he was gonna I thought we were settling on the two fifty
two thirty-five six sixty-seven
the way you do that then is you take see where it says one mil
oh no I could have but I thought Tom was just able to rattle that off still to be honest I guess my next question Susan or are we asking questions Jeff
sure
do you have any funds left in this year that we could roll over or are we
well the budget is predicated on a three hundred thousand dollar utilization over the last several years we haven't needed to use that but we do have that if we do require it so we've been able to save in expenditures but if need be if we have a really bad winter and so forth those dollars are there so we already have an allocation from this year's budget if you look at the summary sheet then you'll see that appropriation was there a question down this end Mike
no
Ryan
no not the
so the mill rate increase with these numbers would be less than one percent yes right
with these numbers the mill rate increase would be zero point nine eight percent
would have been decreasing
Ryan did you want to run that down there
sure just wondering what the numbers are
yes that would be helpful thanks Ryan
no problem thanks
all right it's pretty standard as far as you know I looked at what was done in years past and I tried to try to keep in mind you know the you know the expectations for the year the big thing for me is it's a presidential election year and so that's why I added I actually added two thousand dollars to the regular payroll that was the only change that I made because I wanted to have that flexibility when it came time because honestly with this year we're going to have a really high turnout and with absentee ballots and all that I just want to make sure that we have we're fully staffed in order to be able to you know accommodate you know all of those extra votes and then aside from that we're working on a I'm finalizing the grant now I'll be speaking with you on April sixth to talk about we do a yearly grant with the state as far as indexing our records or putting them online so that'll be coming up and one of my main goals for the year is getting credit card processing in the town clerk's office as well we get a lot of young families that come in and it's I have to turn them away and tell them to go find an ATM because you know they can't get their kids birth certificate and so that's my one of my main goals for the year as well do you have any specific questions Brian
I guess I was just trying to be delicate about it I guess but is the payroll should that be reduced though just based on longevity of the town clerk
it is well it has if you look actually my payroll is the same as our interim town clerk was and it was reduced from
I see so you're going back to thirteen
you have to go back a year because keep in mind that last year last fiscal year we had an interim town clerk so my pay is the same as that and then you have to keep in mind I have an assistant as well so
thank you
yeah no it's all right is that it
that was it
all right cool
Susan do you normally see that the one point five is sufficient for the reserve one point for taxes
yes
is it more than sufficient
not too much that would be what would be nineteen eight point five percent
it used to be at least if we kept raising it
yes we did
people were pays paying you know
right
yes that's a lot
and I know you guys you guys have been good about collecting not only
yes
so that's why I asked
yep good question but we have adjusted that used to be like ninety-five or ninety-six percent but at ninety-eight point five we feel that's a comfortable number we pretty we pretty much hit it but if you go a little above or below you're not going to make too much of a difference in what our collection rate is little difficulty carry you
ninety-four ninety-three
I don't really see no I mean we've been over this whole budget in the last two weeks line by line and I really can't see where we can cut I think everybody came up with really good budgets they seem lean to me I mean you have to pay the wages you need certain things to run this town and if we can come in at less than one percent increase I think that's pretty good
Susan we heard from the state of all
I sent you an email that I received today let me just read it to you let's see there are municipal aid cuts they include things such as housing homeless services for the state at a reduction of fifteen hundred dollars or so and this is not Portland this is for the whole state local and district departments of health a reduction of five hundred dollars school-based health clinics thirty-two thousand nine forty-six human resource development I'm sure this is for the state I don't know I don't know let me read this again CCM will be sending out a statement to our membership momentarily however I wanted to point out that in this business and in particular during these difficult fiscal times we should take a moment to celebrate true victories as they come more difficult times lie ahead but today's bipartisan deficit mitigation package was good for CCM as well as all towns and cities across Connecticut while we were prepared for a much larger hit during this round as you can see by the chart below our towns and cities have been spared for the moment while we often have challenges with the general assembly I would encourage each of you to send thanks to your individual representatives for this package so that's what we were sent a total of five hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred thirty dollars is what is written in this email that's what's written on this email
Susan there was a there was a cut I don't know if it would impact us but there was I did see a cut on the there was evidently a fund for school bus seat belts I don't know if we were involved in that at all but if it okay so it wouldn't affect us at all
the only one that might affect us but I don't think it's going to be large is that different choice if it's really only reduced by one seventy-eight thousand
the whole state
you agree Philip
my guess is that that number wouldn't even impact us at all it's probably a differential added then
this is of course preliminary information but it's as I told you we would have something that's what CCM gave us
when do we get the actual breakdown that's what Jim
whenever they pass the budget when does the session close Fred
May May seventh
May seventh
that first Wednesday in May maybe before the first Wednesday
which is way after our budget has to be in and will be close voted on at that point
ask a question this is your team
sure
how much money is being spent on new positions and what are they
so Brian do you mean from our budget from open choice money
I guess just flat out what are positions
so we have a net increase of three point eight five positions to to our budget one of them is a special education increase that's our preschool an additional preschool at Valley View one of them is a two of them are library media centers we currently our two elementary schools or Valley View does not have a certified library media specialist and Valley View I mean Gildersleeve and Brownstone share one position so this budget puts a certified library media specialist in each of the three buildings so that's three positions and then the high school has an addition of a school-based support specialist that the new principal has added
and I know I don't control anything we do but what are those and what do those do what's a library media specialist
so certified library media specialist runs the library and goes beyond just the circulation of books they actually now have the responsibility of teaching literacy to our students adding on to what's already taught in the classroom setting and it's our vision that we're going to expand these libraries to be more tech-centered our vision is to close the labs so we can avail ourselves of the space have more technology in the library so that these libraries become the center of our of our school district of our each of our schools and that the instruction the instructional technology piece will be embraced by the library media specialists as well they really will be teaching children how to use these devices and our increased technology for research and for other educational purposes you know we've increased the number of platforms that we've used many of our textbooks now are internet-based and so much of the work that we want to have occur in the library will be directed by this by this certified library media specialist really enhancing the work that we already do in a classroom right now we have non-certified people at Valley View in that position and it's my vision that it's my belief as your superintendent that we need a certified person in that in that position
what happens to that employee
that employee is retiring and publicly embraced the idea at a board of education meeting
how about the last one the principal recommended
the high school principal
the physician the new physician
one of the things that you've seen on my teaching and learning priorities is the importance of a continuum of interventional supports that we have in our in our schools right now we don't have a streamlined process that begins at Valley View and ends at the high school on how we actually work with our most needy children what sort of interventions do we use with those kids and what's effective and what does the data show us that's effective and we don't have even anybody at the high school that can do that we may have some people at the elementary school levels but we don't have anyone currently at the at the high school who is zeroing in not on our children identified with special education but with special education needs but on those kids that have increased needs but may not be identified with a learning disability and believe me we have them and we want to intervene early and get them early in their career but right now we don't have that kind of system even in the high school
so this would go throughout all the schools
well the position right now is for a interventionist at the high school and we are reorganizing what people do at each of the three elementary schools so that we do have that continuum I'm not adding anyone I'm changing responsibilities that existing teachers have right now
so you essentially do have somewhat
we will have interventionist we will have a reading specialist in each of the three elementary schools and that is vitally important
part of my ignorance but so was this a separate class that takes place or how does this how does this work with this
so it will happen in a number of different ways Brian it could be this year we introduced a very successful research-based literacy intervention program we've trained people to do this to use this and they can do it in a pull-out situation our vision is that we want to increase our teachers our classroom teachers capabilities to use some of the strategies from this intervention in what we call tier one which is in the classroom so it can happen the answer to your question is it can happen in both places in the classroom or if need be to pull out in small group settings no more than six kids at a time
thank you
yep
how much money do you anticipate to save in the future on the modulars mapping heat or electricity
Ben I don't have that number with me but it was somewhere around the total cost for utility savings was about forty thousand dollars and I don't know if any board member has that particular piece of paper
and I assumed in the reason I didn't see a reduction I assumed that money would then go into removing them is that what your thought or did not how can you describe the next step in that process
so we're we're planning we have planned to to remove these it's not coming from our operational budget it's not it's not in next year's budget as well we're going to take it from our
building maintenance
building maintenance fund thank you so
I think it goes the line item for heat and electricity so that was reduced by that in your budget or no
so when Laura originally did the budget Ben she obviously took into consideration the reductions in utility costs and I think that when she initially created the budget back in December she she did reduce what we put in for utilities
does anybody have a page number on that one or do we not have to break down that one I assumed that forty thousand in savings was going to go towards removing them but if that's not the case
what they're doing at this
would be in this savings would be in this budget
no savings
as we do with
the savings would be at this point they were closing at the end of the year
you're talking about the electricity
we did factor in Tom reminded me we did factor in or Laura factored in the fact that there would be a small increase in Gildersleeve you know in our utility use even though they're heated classrooms now they're obviously going to be in full use with electricity and so I think I think her budget when or when Laura put these numbers together she did include that we really tried to make this closure of the portables a zero impact on the budget we wanted to to absorb any cost that it was and we felt like that was a pretty moderate cost to close those seven classrooms and actually raise the building and put grass seed down so we really tried board of ed tried I know that Laura and I tried to look at where we could do this so we wouldn't have to add it on to our budget for a coming year and as you know we're always trying to use any additional funds we have for our building maintenance projects and there are plenty of them
no I get that but I'm you know if there was a ten thousand dollar increase in electricity I'm sure the heating would change too much Gildersleeve if there still was a thirty thousand dollar savings and we could agree that that may be there every dollar counts and obviously I don't want to impact education I think you've done an excellent job as our superintendent but if there is thirty thousand that we could Tom shaking his head what do you got Tom
so can may I may I comment to that if because after the board of ed the board of ed starts very early as you as you know we start the business manager starts in November pulling together the principals requests and then in December the two of us sit down and we start looking at this very carefully we presented a budget of over twenty million dollars to the board of ed on January fifth on January twelfth we reduced that knowing that we had some increased savings in health insurance that we didn't anticipate at the same time we've reported to the board that we just got the new pensions pension numbers in and they're not in the budget and those pension increases were an unanticipated forty-two thousand dollars on January fourth the Monday that we returned back from from school we had a student move in from out of district who required who required education we had a student move in from out of district who required, um, who required education services outside of the district. That was a thirty-eight thousand dollar hit to our budget. We were able to come up with a cooperative on transportation. Otherwise, it probably would have been a lot more. Those are just some of the examples, Ben, that are coming our way all the time. So, while we may have a ten thousand dollar savings in electricity from Valley View portable closures, we have all these other pieces, and believe me, I could go on. When we hire classroom teachers, we don't hire the lowest paid teacher, we hire the most able teacher. And if we can hire a Spanish teacher with twenty-five years of experience and see what she can offer our students at the high school, we're going to do that because we think that's best. So, those are the things that, you know, but we only budget fifty thousand dollars a year for a teach, for a, a teacher replacement. So, there are things that are coming and going all the time.
Did you agree with that number that Susan brought up earlier on the savings? Do you concur with that?
I do. Um, when, when Tom came and spoke to me last week, um, about a further reduction of forty, of forty thousand dollars, I said, you know, I'm part of the team and I know that, that we, we received this unanticipated one point five percent, and I can take that hit, but that's about it.
You also? Phil, just a, a general question. I think, I think you touched on it last time when you were here. Some of that staffing, your three-plus staffing, as I recall, had, had to do with aides, uh, teachers' aides who would be some of whom were, kind of, in work with special education students, is that correct?
Yeah, we have, we, that's also a, a changing realm, Fred. We have, um, students with all kinds of needs that sometimes do require extra support. Again, we're, we're, we're working on currently, this is a, uh, I want to answer your question exactly the way. Why don't you rephrase it so I make sure that I do answer it correctly?
Yeah, what, what I was thinking, what I was getting at is you, you had mentioned, uh, that, um, you know, students come in, and in my understanding is student X comes into Portland.
Yeah.
Moves in and happens to have special needs. Uh, the town of Portland obviously is responsible for that person.
Right.
And I, uh, so, when those kinds of events happen, um, those are costs, uh, both in staff and dollars to the, to the district, to the town. But what I was trying to get at is, is with the, uh, with the staffing that's going to be going on, there is some anticipated possible savings because you, we will have fewer outplacements or potentially fewer outplacements, uh, as a result of, of the staffing changes?
I do not have any hard numbers on those, those changes right now because they're all dependent on a decision that happens that's outside of my control. It's called a, a pupil placement team meeting, a PPT. And so, you know, many people have to decide that it's in the best interest of the kid to, for the child to come back to the district and for the district to, um, assume the responsibility of teaching these kids. Right now, I can't tell you how many were trying to get back into the district. That may produce some savings to the district, but I want you to know that my new special education director is working on that. But, uh, these are some of our most challenging, challenged kids with some of the most challenging disabilities. And so, that's why we, that's why, so, we, we may have an outplacement cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a student. When the student comes back, we may have tens of thousands of dollars of increased internal costs that we have to cover for the student's IEP. Will there be a savings? Yeah, we hope, we hope there will be a savings, that we're not paying some other school district to offer these services. We're actually doing it.
Right, yeah, that, I, you know, I think that, uh, you've answered my question. I, I just think that, 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 um, type of, uh, planning has an ability or potential, at least, to save, uh, be possibly, hopefully, a better situation for the student and also save, save the district some money, so, uh...
And I hope to be standing up at this podium next year to be able to tell you that, that our budget has been reduced in that particular area because of the work that, that Mary Ann, uh, has done to reduce that number.
Because that, that I believe is one of your more unpredictable parts, part of the budget, uh, those costs.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one last one, just so I'm clear on that. It's safe to say you wouldn't take somebody that was outplaced at one fifty and then do it in-house and find out it costs us one six, correct? You would only do it if there was a cost savings?
Yeah, but you would let, you would nev-, yes. The answer to your question is yes. I would never.
That's all I wanted, I wanted to make sure.
I know.
Any other suggested changes, Board? Kathy, any other changes? Ben? Fred?
Uh, just a, just a general comment after everybody has, is through with their budget questions.
I think we're there.
Everybody done?
I think we're there?
Uh, no, I just, just two things. I'd like, I'd like to say that I thank you, Susan, and Tom, and all of the town employees, as well as the volunteer boards, like the Board of Education, for their work. I think the budget generally is reasonable budget. And, uh, having said that, I just would caution you that I think next year, we're going to have a much more challenging time than we have this year. It appear, you know, the, the state, uh, did make, um, over two hundred and twenty million dollars in reductions, did not evidently hit the municipal aid very hard, if at all here. However, there is about a billion dollar, a little sh- a little short of a billion dollars in the next cycle. And so, I suspect municipal, municipalities will be, uh, facing some changes and reductions. At least there's a pretty good probability of that. So, any, any changes we have in our budget, any structural changes, uh, those kinds of costs will be ongoing next year and in the future. And we have the possibility of less money coming in. But thanks to everybody who did put it together. I, I know it's a hard job and, uh...
Well, and I, and to your point, Fred, I think every month, as we go over our expenditures and our revenues, we need to keep that in mind. And, um, we'll look for your guidance as to how you want us to proceed. That's important, and it starts last month, it doesn't start next month, so to speak. It happens every month when we go over the budget, and, um, that's why the first Wednesday of every month, we go over our numbers, um, so that you have an indication where we're headed and, um, encourage the Board of Ed, particularly next year, and as the months go on, that you come and visit with us or one of your representatives and let us know how your budget is going. Because your increase is very modest for next year, it's probably about one and a half percent, and the impact to the mill rate is less than one percent. So, it's a modest, uh, change in our budget, but still in all, we need to, to take very careful attention. And I'm looking at all the directors in the audience as well, in terms of how we manage our budget going forward. Any savings and efficiencies we need to incorporate. Um, I also want to remind you that we're very active in the statewide organizations that help us. Um, I know the Board of Ed is active with CAE and, um, other organizations and CCM and COST for the town. They really, really do help us understand what's coming down the pike and help to mitigate some of the impacts of things that might be coming. Sure, go ahead, Ben.
I just remembered one more thing. Did the Goodrich property that we paid off, did we have the fifty thousand extra in this year or we paid it off in this year's budget?
That the purchase that Ben's referring to is property on Route seventeen, which is the, um, recreational park land. We finished paying for that this year, and according to the ordinance that was passed many years ago, the town sets aside fifty thousand dollars a year toward open space acquisition. So, while that money was being spent to pay down that debt, um, it was under the rules, so to speak, of the ordinance, and we continue to comply with that ordinance. So, in this budget, Ben, there is fifty thousand dollars in the open space acquisition fund because that's required by the ordinance to be set aside, not spent necessarily, but to be set aside.
I guess my point would be, could we somehow use fifty thousand of that on the parcel we're purchasing now?
Well, we already paid for that land.
Could we just allocate that fifty and then we'd have a fifty savings in this budget?
Tom?
Yeah, to your, to your point, we used a set, uh, no, you think you need to make the contribution into next year because of the way that, believe the ordinance states, you have to always make the fifty. This year, we used a portion of the land preservation fund, which is money that come in from the town clerk's office, and it's set aside for land acquisition and other capital. So, that was a good chunk of money, it was up fifty years old, thousand. The town had also set aside money in capital bond for open space and, or, uh, for land acquisitions, sorry, under, under, uh, the land, under the land budget. So, that money was therefore utilized for that component. So, those were the two areas where you, where you, where the money was utilized. But if you feature, um, open space, or if it says, yeah, you could utilize that fund. But based upon the way they're saying, the way the ordinance is, it's supposedly, you're supposed to set aside fifty every year into that, so we'd still have to make the fifty contribution in.
I guess my point was, I think in the future, we're going to need to look at that when we aren't even funding some of our roofs and we're funding, um, open space for some of our essential needs. Uh, I think we're going to have to, especially in next year's budget, we're going to have to look at things like that. So, that was why I wanted to bring it up. But if we can't roll that for next year, it doesn't change anything.
Yeah, one thing you, you should do, and certainly I can, uh, either give you a copy or guide you to online, um, take a look at all of our ordinances, because you're right, we do need to always look at them. Um, the thought was, when that ordinance was put together, that when open space does become available, in order to have the dollars, um, it's, it's set aside so that you have the dollars to purchase open space. But, you know, the, the, this board can decide whether they want to continue that ordinance or not. So, um, is there, we don't take a vote tonight because there is no, um, notice of, of voting tonight, so I'll ask for consensus on the budget. And the total figures would be, um, as presented to you in this amendment that I sent to you, which would be under proposed two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen expenditure budget. General government would be tw- twelve million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand eighty-two dollars. Board of Education budget would be nineteen million, nine hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty dollars. And the total combined budget for the total town budget would be thirty-two million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars. The impact to the mill rate would be an increase of zero point three-two mills, which is a zero point nine eight percent increase, bringing the mill rate to thirty-two point six-six as projected. Is there consensus to proceed and prepare for you this amendment to the budget for your vote on April sixth, if I'm not mistaken? Yes? Fred?
Okay.
Ben?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Anything further in the workshop tonight? The next time we meet, we will not meet tomorrow night, we do not need tomorrow night's meeting. So, the next time we will meet is the first Wednesday in April, which will be April sixth, at which time the Board will vote on its budget, as will be presented then to the town meeting on the first Monday in May, which is May second, which will be at the Portland High School at seven o'clock in the evening, at which time people can comment on the budget if there is, I believe it's three percent? Three percent of the electorate present, which amounts to, Ryan, about five hundred, six hundred people. An amendment can be made, we can get those details for you. An amendment can be made to the budget. Um, if a majority at that time votes on that, it then goes to the referendum as the amended budget. Typically, we don't get that number. Um, so, the budget that the selectmen passed tonight would go to a full vote referendum from six AM to eight PM, and encourage every registered voter and property owner to vote on May the ninth, which is a Monday. And that is at the Portland Senior Center, also known as the waiver center. Any questions on the budget process? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? By Kathy, seconded by Fred, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.